Most of themselves.
Oh, yeah. That would stress me out.
Just like the sheep.
Wow.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Hey.
I didn't know.
Wow. I'm in the midst.
And that kitchen.
I was doing really well. Came over and we started talking.
South.
And your kitchen.
Yeah. Hey, you should say.
What do you say?
Counsel, Mayor, are we ready? Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to Lebanon City Council meeting for April twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five, and I ask that you would please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for having this privilege of serving our city. I pray, Father, that as we discuss our agenda and craft policies for our city, we always put the people's interest above our own. Remind us, Father, that we are in a position not to be served, but to serve the public. I pray for our mayor, the various levels of city officials, and this assembled council. I'm asking that you graciously grant us the wisdom to govern amid the many conflicting interests and other issues of our time. Additionally, I humbly ask that you continue to protect our first responders and those serving in our military. In your name I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cheryl, if you could please call the roll.
Mrs. Hados?
Here.
Mr. McGuire?
Here.
Mr. Morales?
Here.
Mr. Potash?
Here.
Chairman Martin?
Here. Counsel, you've all received the minutes for our council meeting for March twenty fourth, our March council meeting. Do I have any corrections, additions, deletions at this time? Okay, the minutes will stand. Next on our agenda, we have the budget report, and this is for January first through March thirty first of two thousand and twenty five. And Mayor, if you could give us a rundown.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So with twenty-five percent of the budget year completed, revenues are at twenty-four percent, expenditures are at twenty-one percent, so we are in a good position. And just a reminder that the real estate bills only went out in March, so the revenue is just starting to come in for that.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Any questions regarding the budget from counsel? And from press? And anyone in the public? All right. Next on our agenda, tonight we have a department update from Janelle Grau from the Community and Economic Development. She is the Community and Economic Development Administrator. So I will, she's set up. I will give the floor to her.
So while Janelle's getting ready, I just want to give a shout out to Melissa. So we are in the middle of our audit prep and getting ready. Next week they'll come in to start doing the fieldwork, and Melissa really has stepped up and really put in extra effort this year with Helen retiring, so I just want to say a big thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the extra work. I know whenever there's staff changeover, everybody gets to wear an extra hat till things settle again. So thank you, Melissa. And Janelle, whenever you're ready. Been looking forward to this.
Everybody hear me? Good evening, council members. Tonight, I'm excited to share an update on just a few of the many projects the city has been busy working on. As the Community and Economic Development Administrator, I have the privilege of working on a wide range of initiatives, but if we went over all of them, we'd be here all night. So for tonight, I've selected a handful of key projects that highlight our ongoing efforts to enhance public spaces, expand recreational opportunities, and improve overall quality of life for our residents. These projects reflect our commitment to investing in our community and creating spaces where people want to live, work, and play. So let's dive in. On April first, the City of Lebanon proudly celebrated a ribbon cutting for our downtown streetscape project. This project marks a major milestone in revitalizing Cumberland Street from Fourth Street to Twelfth Street, enhancing safety, accessibility, and overall beauty of our downtown. Improvements included installation of new sidewalks with stamped concrete beauty strip for bump outs with flashing beacons at the crosswalks, curbing ADA ramps with retractable warning surfaces, utility adjustments, expansion and refurbishing of the decorative streetlights, new street trees, and landscaping. Liberty Trail Park is on Liberty Street from Spring Street to Walton Street. This location is an existing pedestrian-only street right next to City Hall that we're making renovations to, including planting, string lighting, Victorian lights that match the poles along the streetscape project, benches, et cetera. This project was awarded to Doug Lamb Construction in fall two thousand and twenty four for five hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars, and the city is using ARPA funding for this project, and it is to be completed by the end of July. This is a highly anticipated project that we know the public is eager to see open. The dog park will be located at the former site of the Louden Memorial Water Complex, covering approximately one point five acres. It will feature ADA accessible ramp, steps leading down to the park, separate areas for large and small dogs, along with benches and water fountains. This will have an access control device at the main entrance, so the public will need to register their dogs with the city to provide their dog vaccination information, and then we'll provide either a key FOB or an app for access. Thanks to a D C N R grant and ARPA funding, this project was awarded to Columbia Excavating for two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. We held a ribbon cutting with about thirty people in attendance on April seventh. It was a very rainy and cold spring day, so we'd like to thank everyone who attended. The construction is underway and is planned to be completed this summer. Sponsorship opportunities are available for individuals, families, and businesses. So if you'd like to put your business logo or your dog's name displayed on a dog bone, that'll be on the park's fencing, there is sponsorship information at the table by the entrance. As proposed in the master site plan, we are working with the Coleman Memorial Park Board of Trustees to convert two existing tennis courts into four pickleball courts. Coleman Memorial Park currently has two separate tennis court locations, and this is repurposing the courts that are between the AmpliTheater and the Bike Park. Thanks to a fifty thousand dollar D C N R grant and thirty thousand dollars from the county's ARPA allocation, we anticipate construction to begin very soon and completed this summer. The contract was awarded to Arthur Funkenstern's for seventy-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars. We are thrilled to announce the completion of Phase One of the Coleman Memorial Park Connector Trail, made possible through funding from a Penn State Reach grant. This phase starts at the baseball field parking lot and extends down the hill, past the ball fields, and to Twenty-Second Street. This project was just recently completed, and we already see it being heavily used. The city has been collaborating with the Lebanon Valley Community Tennis Association on a long-term vision to expand tennis courts and introduce pickleball courts at Southwest Park. The project involves repositioning of the courts to accommodate three tennis courts, two pickleball courts, and two practice courts for children under twelve. Depending on the project cost, we will also include, we've also included the option to resurface the existing basketball courts and shuffleball, shuffleboard. The project is live on Penn Bid, and we will be opening the bids on May ninth. Funding sources include ARPA, an L S A grant, Penn State Reach grant, a donation from the Lebanon Valley Community Tennis Association, and a possible U S T A grant. After the city made the difficult decision to close the pool in two thousand and eighteen, we engaged the public to determine what new recreation amenities they wanted. The overwhelming response was a dog park and a splash pad. The splash pad will be located behind the Optimus Building at Southwest Park in the existing concrete area. We conducted extensive research consulting other municipalities with splash pads to learn best practices. Based on their insights, we chose Southwest Park for its accessibility, parking, and open space. The splash pad will be free and fully ADA accessible and is currently in the final design phase with bid documents being prepared. Construction is expected to start this summer, two thousand and twenty-five, and the project is being funded with ARPA funds. The Veterans Memorial Walkway runs from Fifth Street to Twelfth Street along the Quiddapahilla Creek. The city has been working on several improvements, including replacing the wooden fencing, installing new bollards, benches, picnic tables, trash and recycling receptacles, and removing dead trees while planting new ones. On April twenty-second, the Shade Tree Commission planted sixteen new trees, two of which were planted thanks to a one thousand dollar donation from Making a Difference of Lebanon, PA. There are still more improvements that need to be completed along the walkway, but a majority of the work is done. We are also improving the asphalt walkway in areas, installing a sign with a map of the walkway, connecting trails and some wayfinding information, and adding another pollinator garden. These enhancements have been funded through the Lebanon County Marcella Shale Grant and ARPA funding. Additionally, the city was awarded twenty thousand dollars from another Penn State Reach grant to install bike sharows, street markings, and signage that was installed from Twelfth Street to Johnny Wanger Memorial Park along Chestnut Street. This is the first of hopefully many connections from green spaces in the City of Lebanon to our Lebanon Valley Rail Trail. The City of Lebanon also contributed two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in ARPA funding towards the Johnny Wanger Memorial Park. The ribbon cutting for the park is scheduled for June sixth. The city owns and maintains nine playgrounds across Lebanon. While the equipment at Coleman Memorial Park installed in two thousand and fifteen and Southwest Park installed in two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and nineteen remain in excellent condition, the remaining playgrounds, most of which installed in nineteen ninety-eight and nineteen ninety-nine, are in need of replacement. Recently, we installed new playground equipment at East End Park, Sixth and Crowell, and Third and Crowell Todd Lots. Providing an update on its progress, Sixth and Crowell equipment was installed, fresh mulch has been delivered, and the Todd Lot will be open this week. East End equipment installed, has been installed, and the playground has been freshly mulched, and the playground is open, but we are still going to make some additional improvements that include interactive play paintings, blocktop enhancements, and basketball court upgrades. Third and Crowell final touches are underway, including grass planting and mulching, and we are hoping to get this Todd Lot open to the public soon. Looking ahead and pending council's approval, the city plans to apply for a D C E D grant to replace the aging playground equipment at Northeast Park. Improvements will likely occur in two thousand and twenty-six, pending grant award. And finally, while this may not be a major project in the city, it's a big deal for the city. On Saturday, April twenty-sixth, despite the miserable raining weather, over a hundred volunteers came out to help clean up and mulch our playgrounds. Although we weren't able to complete every park due to the weather, the majority of the parks were refreshed and looking great, thanks to incredible efforts of our volunteers. We want to extend a special thank you to Making a Difference of Lebanon for completing the mulching at Butex Park and to the Lebanon School District staff and students who filled our other parks with energy and hard work. We are truly grateful for everyone's dedication to refreshing our parks, so they are ready for play. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share exciting updates on a few city projects. If you have any questions, please let me know, and I've also provided my contact information in case anyone in attendance has questions or would like some more information on the Community and Economic Development Office. Thanks.
Thank you, Janelle. So I have one question for you.
Sure.
And I might have a couple, but I at least have one. The dog park, so the, you said a dog bone attached to the fence for, if you get a sponsorship, you can get your business put on. What exactly does that mean?
So we have, attached to the letter over there, we have kind of an image rendering of what it would look like. So depending on the donation size, the bigger the bone, you could put your logo on there, you could put your name, you could put your dog's name. So we have different, we have four different categories. Two hundred and fifty-plus donations, you get a smaller dog bone, and then it's going up gradually in size per donation after that.
Sounds fun. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Janelle, one question on the dog park, just to, I know you just covered this. There will not be a full-time attendant at the dog park.
No. I'm not sure where that came from, but no.
I was listening to W L B R this morning, and there was discussion, and
Okay.
one of the guests was saying there's going to be a full-time attendant.
My staff and I have never said that there was going to be a full-time attendant. It's always been, it's going to be an access control device, and the reason, again, we consulted with, looked at many different dog parks, and we're requiring people to register their dogs so we can verify that they've been vaccinated for the health and safety of the residents or visitors using the park and for the dogs, so.
So Mayor, you would say then, most dog parks that you visited in preparation for the city's dog park had some sort of control mechanism? Did you go, did you visit any parks that you could, the dogs could roam free or without fencing?
No.
And again, most of the parks, I'm not interrogating you, but most of the parks you visited, they had to do some sort of paperwork to register the animal, the dog, to make sure they had their?
Most of them.
So nothing new what we're doing for the city?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other?
You know, all of, if I may, all of the, you heard, there's a lot of projects happening or that have recently happened, and these are all great quality-of-life improvements for the City of Lebanon. And it's important to note that because, you know, there's a game plan, there's a vision to improve the downtown streetscape, the quality of life, and what we have to offer our residents so that we can try and recruit and retain not only our residents, but businesses. You know, we got our house in order financially, we've worked on an economic development strategy, we're making improvements, thanks, you know, mainly to ARPA funding. It gave us a huge boost to be able to do these things. But all of this is just building and building upon the next step, so.
Well, I for one want to thank you and your staff for
It's a lot of work.
what you've put into this. It's amazing. Thank you.
Any other questions from counsel for Janelle?
I have a question for you, just with some of the projects that have been completed. Putting you on the spot, but any highlights on projects that have been completed more quickly than anticipated? Any projects that have been more successful than anticipated? Any highlights from completed projects, looking backwards?
I mean, we get positive feedback going from the community on a lot of the projects, streetscape being one of them. Sorry, I bumped, I did something there. That, the connector trail at Coleman Memorial Park, you know, you've, at least I've seen it posted online. I see that as a big asset. I see a lot of people out using that. While there was some negativity about the connection between Veterans Memorial Walkway and Wanger Memorial Park online, I think a lot of people who do bike really appreciate that. It doesn't hinder, you know, our vehicles, so it was, you know, another, another step forward for all forms of transportation. Do you have anything to add with that? I mean, the majority of our projects, we get positive feedback despite what some people may say. As far as timelines go, I think a lot of our projects tend to, you get surprises and maybe not be done quite as fast as you may anticipate, but I don't think we've had too many of those.
There's always surprises, and it's usually something to do with utilities.
Yes.
So the only project that really was done, I think, almost exactly on time was the City Hall renovations, but other than that, it seems like sometimes we run into snags, and it takes a little bit longer. Not a lot, but I know Liberty Park has gone a little bit longer than we had hoped, but and the Stormwater projects that we did, but they got done in time for the streetscape, you know, improvement projects, so it all works out. We all just, you gotta, you know, address the issues as they come up and and just kind of go with the flow and make it work.
Thank you.
I have one question, Mayor, probably to you. The connector trail is Phase One. Are you spearheading Phase Two to connect? I know it's out of the city, but to connect the connector trail to Union Canal Tunnel Park.
So we had, there's two options, to go on the north side or the south side of the road. The south side's West Lebanon Township, the north side is North Lebanon Township. We originally had met with West Lebanon, got their approval, then we met with North Lebanon because we weren't sure about getting across Twenty-Second Street, and they were on board as well. Since then, we've been able to talk to the property owner, and I think we've arrived at an agreement, and so.
For West Lebanon or?
No, to, to finish the connector and get to Twenty-Second Street. There's a portion, because we don't want to connect on an angle, we want to go straight across Twenty-Second Street, that's the safest way. So we had to negotiate with the property owner, and I feel pretty good about that. So now, we could go either West Lebanon or North Lebanon, so we need to start that discussion again. It's been a while since I've been out there and looked at it in the field. It may be easier to go on the West Lebanon side instead of North Lebanon, so. I need to, I need to re-establish those conversations. Well, it's expensive, so we don't want to put in two. We're gonna do, we're gonna work with one.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from counsel? I just got to walk down, I took note because I knew this hearing was happening. I got to walk down Veterans Memorial Walkway and took note of all the new improvements, the trash cans, the parks, and the fence and such. That parks needed some love, so it was quite encouraging. But yeah, any questions from the press? And from the public for Janelle? Yeah, come on up, Cornell. I'm not sure if that microphone is on or not, so you might need to check it out. Yep, we're good.
This is not a question, I just want to say thank you for fixing up the Veterans Memorial Parkway and the over forty people years old remember growing up at playgrounds, so thanks for fixing up all the playgrounds in the city. And I just want to acknowledge that some of that money that we donated came from the V F W. They gave it to us about two years ago, so just wanted to acknowledge that. But thank you for fixing up all the parks, and now all the playgrounds look very good and very decent.
Thank you, Cornell, and thank you for sharing about the V F W.
Yes, come on up.
I forgot to have Cornell do this, but name and address, if I may, for the record.
Dave Funk, live at six oh nine Chestnut Street. I just want to add to what Cornell said. As you know, I'm on the trustee board of Coleman's Park, but I'm really happy to see the city investing in their other parks in town, because it just makes it so much more accessible to some of our residents who maybe don't make it to Coleman Park and, you know, some of the other locations a little further out of town. It's just really important to have other places for people to have recreation. I think you're doing a good job there, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Any other questions from the public? Yep, sure, come on up. Let's see, I'll get to that at the end, if it's related to Janelle's hearing or her presentation. But if anything else, we'll get to that at the end here, so, but thank you. Anybody else regarding parks and Janelle's presentation? All right, hearing none, we are going to move along on our.
Thanks, Janelle.
Yeah, thank you, Janelle. Really appreciate it. Lots of good information, again, just, we're at a great place of the city, and, I mean, the pictures, when you drive around and look, tell the tale that our city is becoming more and more beautiful, so, thank you. But yes, moving along on our official agenda for tonight. Next, we'll have a resolution. This is Resolution Twenty-four, authorizing the proper officials of the City of Lebanon to file a Greenways Trail and Recreation Program Grant Application with the Commonwealth Financing Authority for improvements to the playground area in Northwest Park, Northeast Park. And do I have a motion for Resolution Number Twenty-four?
Yes, I would like to make a motion for Resolution Number Twenty-four.
Thank you, Joe. Do I have a second?
So seconded.
Thank you, Sean, and Mayor, if you could talk about this a little bit?
Sure, so I think you've heard tonight that, you know, my administration has diligently been working on replacing all of our playground equipment at the different parks, making improvements to trails and connectors and whatnot, and we still have a couple more to do. And in particular, this grant application is for Northeast Park, and this application is for a request to the Commonwealth Financing Authority, their Marcellus legacy funding. It's a maximum project amount of two hundred and fifty thousand, requires a fifteen percent match. If we would receive the maximum amount, we would need a match of thirty-seven thousand, five hundred. We do have money reserved for parks in the Capital Reserve Fund, or we could try and incorporate it into the budget for two thousand and twenty-six, so it just depends. If awarded the grant, the city proposes to utilize the Co-Stars contract to purchase the equipment, again, off a state contract, and we would also utilize one of the approved installers as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Any questions from counsel regarding Resolution Number Twenty-four? I think it's appropriate that this goes along with our agenda for tonight. So any questions from, from the press? And from the public regarding Resolution Number Twenty-four? Okay, hearing none. Cheryl, if you could please call the roll.
Mrs. Hados?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mr. Morales?
Yes.
Mr. Potash?
Yes.
Chairman Martin?
Yes, and that is five in favor, and this Resolution Number Twenty-four is passed. Which brings us to the end of our formal agenda. I want to, at this time, open the floor to counsel, if you have any, anything of interest to the city that you want to bring up at this time. And Mayor, if you have anything?
No. Janelle said it all.
Yeah, for sure. And any questions from the public? If you want to come up now, if you have a question or comment at this time, would be great. Just step right up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, and the floor is yours.
Cindy Schlegel, and I live at five seventy-one Guilford Street, and I've lived there for about forty years. Thank you. That was a great presentation, and I think that it's good for the public to know everything that the city does for all of us. So the city offices and the streetscape are phenomenal, really a great improvement, and I hope that the pride that we feel in that will carry forward, and we'll take care of it. We'll appreciate it and take care of it. Last week, I walked in town for the Merrill debate, and when I walked out my front door, I said for like the hundredth time, you have got to replace these sidewalks. They're really bad. And I walked in town, and as I walked down Seventh Street, I realized that it's not just in front of my house, but it's all north of the city. I don't walk that much on the south side, so I can't speak to that, but the north side is in really bad shape. And I know that there's a lot more than sidewalks to take care of there with the image of it, but I think that that's one place that we could start with. The stone and the cement is literally crushed, and you can't sweep, you can't blow dust like that. Roller skates, baby strollers, wheelchairs, it's really, especially on Seventh Street, it's really bad. So when I got home, I started Googling it, and the city ordinances for that are just absolutely horrendous to try to decipher. It is my responsibility. I am liable for it. But when you think that sixty percent, I think this is correct, sixty percent of the homes on the north side are rentals or businesses, and maybe only forty percent are homeowners, we're not being held accountable. That was part of the ordinances that I read, that we are to be held accountable for that. Then I started researching prices, and it's not cheap. And I think that we need help. We need educated, and we need to be held accountable. So then, when I started researching the prices, I talked to a contractor, and he said, you know, if it's one square, or if it's three or a block, you're going to get a much better price. So if we could do something that would help, first of all, make the rental properties and businesses accountable, and then show how many homeowners need that kind of help, and if we could all get in and try to get a better price on what we're doing there, I think that that's, that would be really, really helpful. So I know that this is the cost of homeownership, and we're responsible and standing account. and standing accountable creates the pride in our neighborhood that we need. Clean, smooth sidewalks will hopefully create an atmosphere of better control, safety, less crime, and maybe a potted plant or two along the way. Please, help us figure out a way forward. The north side needs the attention now, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Really appreciate it. I appreciate the fact that you did your background, you did your research. I know reading the codes and ordinances can be quite difficult. My background is in construction. I'm not an attorney, but I sit up here and have to try to decipher, too, and I often struggle. And yeah, I appreciate you going through that process and doing your best to figure it out, and also being a resident of Lebanon City. I don't disagree with you. There is a lot of work that still needs to be done, absolutely. I mean, we got so far, but there's always more to be done as infrastructure just over times, you know, continues to deteriorate. It's part of our world. So it is something that is continually in our conversations, you know, seeing if there would be any way. I mean, it's tens of millions of dollars, I'm sure, of improvements. But yeah, thanks for coming, thanks for coming and talking, so.
I thought Janelle needed another project.
There we go.
So I can tell you when we were doing the resurfacing projects, and we required the property owners to at least replace their curbing if it needed it, and the engineer had gone out, did an assessment, and we sent out notices. And some of the property owners couldn't afford it, and we couldn't afford to put in all that curbing. That was before ARPA funding, really, when we sent out those notices, because you send them out at least two years before the paving project, the actual resurfacing. But what we were able to do was put property owners and neighbors in contact with each other to work a deal with a contractor, and the contractors did do multiple properties to save, you know, on the cost of it. So that has been done in the past, at least in areas of the city because of a special resurfacing project. The inspectors and Public Safety Department, if they're out because of a complaint and they see the sidewalk or curbing in poor shape, they will work in conjunction with Public Works Department, and between the two of them, a notice goes out as a part of a potential notice of violation for them to make it at least safe or, you know, to replace or repair whatever is needed. But other than that, yeah, so I hear what you're saying. We'll give it some thought, see what we can come up with.
Start, just to take some pride. And in my property, there's also a storm drain cover on it, so I know that there's regulations all involving that, too. So we need educated.
Okay, thank you.
And it's not just the north side either. It's bad everywhere, Cindy. Mayor, statewide, it is, it's pretty much usually the responsibility of the homeowner, correct?
Yes.
I mean, so Lebanon is not unique?
No, no.
Okay, and nationwide, is that?
I don't know.
Okay.
Any other questions from council or thoughts at this time? Okay. All right, well, some things to think about, more work to be done, so. I think that that's it, everything that I have. If anybody else from the public has anything at this time to come up and say, I'm going to open up the floor. Okay. Then, do I have a motion to adjourn tonight, to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is passed and carried, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night, and we'll see you next month.